Good evening. I am Joseph Pereira, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It is 6:00 PM on Thursday, February 20th, 2025. We are meeting at one government center in the first-floor hearing room. Pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, Subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being -- is echoing -- that this meeting is being recorded by Fall River Government TV, Mr. Craig Salvador, with both video and audio versions. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combined version of this meeting, please notify me now, and I will make a public announcement of your intent. There are none. Our recording secretary this evening is Patty Aguiar, sitting to my immediate right. Present this evening are regular members, John Frank, who's our Vice Chair, Jim Cawkins, who is our Secretary Clerk, Dan DePere, and Ricky Sahadi. Also present this evening are two alternate members, Alexis Elsamo and Eric Kelly. Also present is the Director of Engineering and Planning, sitting down to my far-left, Mr. Daniel Aguiar. Patty, have all the petitions to be considered been properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the ZBA, Chapter 40A, Mass. General Law as amended?
Yes.
I thereby declare the February 20th, 2025 regularly-scheduled meeting of the ZBA of the City of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before. I remind all persons presenting before the Board, including petitioners, abutters, anyone in support, or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the Chair. The Board's rules and regulations direct the Board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis of their petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested parties that this is the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Board's authority exists pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 40A and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or other governmental approvals may be required for the specific development which is -- and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the Zoning Board this evening. The action taken by this Board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. We urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petition and after a decision of the Board has been made. A copy of the ordinance is available at the City Clerk's office or from the Planning Department. I remind everyone that the Building Inspector is the zoning enforcement authority, and you are here this evening because the Building Inspector has deemed that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The City Charter, Section 9-18 mandates that all multiple-member bodies develop and adopt rules for public comment. We have adopted such a policy which in short provides for citizens' input on zoning board's specific matters at the end of this meeting. If you wish to make public comment, there's a sign-up sheet on the table just outside the door. I declare that an official copy of the Fall River zoning ordinance is available at the City Clerk's office, and that one cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. Good evening, everyone. Let us -- we have no old business tonight. It's refreshing. We're into new business right away. Item number one, Marino Z. Benavides, care of Attorney David M. Assad, 84 and 94 Everett Street and 310 Alden Street, map J-18, Lot 25. The applicant requests a special permit under Section 86-423B of the City of Fall River zoning ordinance. The petitioner proposes to divide Lot 25, as shown on the City of Fall River Assessors' map, J-18, into three lots, leaving an existing three-family dwelling, which is number 94 Everett Street on one lot, another existing three-family dwelling, which is number 310 Alden Street on a second lot, and the existing six-family dwelling, which is number 84 Everett Street on a third lot. The property is located within an A2 apartment zoning district. Counsel?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I am David Assad. I'm an attorney licensed to practice in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I maintain offices at 326 Pine Street in the City of Fall River. With me this evening is Mr. Marino A. Benavides, father of Marino Z. Benavides, who has his power of attorney to act on behalf of his son, Marino Z. So this particular property is a square. 84 Everett Street, 94 Everett Street, 310 Alden Street, all exist on one parcel. Since 1944, the properties have appeared on one deed, parcel one and parcel two, parcel one being 84 Everett Street, parcel two being 94 Everett Street. Prior to that, they were separate lots. It was 84 Everett Street was Assessors' map, number 24, but from 1944 forward, the assessors have merged them together into one parcel. So, under 86-423B, the petitioner is requesting a special permit to divide these three pre-existing lots, three existing dwellings, into three separate lots. It talks about 1954 as being -- they had to exist prior to that. The history of the title brings us back to 1889, when 84 and 34 Everett Street were erected. 310 Alden Street was also built in the 1900s, but recent fire caused it to be rehabbed, so now 310 is relatively a new building. 310 Alden Street has, my understanding is, separate sewer line. 84 has its original sewer line. There's not -- there's no combination. I couldn't find anything in the chain of title where there was an easement or cross-easement of sewer or water lines, and we know that 94 has a separate sewer line. That's confirmed by the assessor -- not the assessors, the sewer department's field cards. So basically, what's happening is 84 Everett Street boundary gets on its own lot. Some of the property that was associated with 84 Everett Street gets allocated to 94. 94 then becomes a standalone lot by itself, as does 310 Alden Street. The six-family remains. If any of you went by the property, the property is built right on the property line. There is no availability to ask or to include off-street parking, so nothing really is happening there. It's just property lines that are being created. And if the Board is so inclined, I would ask -- I would recommend that the Board require markers for the -- at least the end markers of each lot, so we're not before the Board later on talking about where the boundary lines are. And you can also think about maybe -- I don't -- fences on between 94 and 310 may be a good idea, but I don't know about the 84 and 94. There may be -- there is this common driveway, but it's no longer a common driveway when this is done. And I don't think it's being used as a driveway. It's being used as a common access. But with the new boundary line being established, there may be an ability to put a fence up there if they wanted. I wouldn't -- I would ask not to be prohibited from doing that. And that's what's before the Board. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
On Lot Number Two, David?
Yes.
Are they using that asphalt way as a driveway currently?
No.
They're not using it for off-street parking at all?
No, sir.
Okay.
And I think one of the reasons why they can't, and I'm going to be fresh about this, because I was kind of amazed, because 84 really should have been a standalone lot and shouldn't have been part of this process, at least in 1944. But someone, must have been a middle-class engineer, encroached onto 84 with the extension of a building, so that prohibited where there once was maybe access. You can't get a car up there anymore.
Along Alden Street, there's a retaining wall about five or six feet high, a little bit of driveway from being installed. You could potentially drive in between the other two buildings, coming in off of Everett, but historically, there's a very narrow gate, and I went back through historical photos and could never see any vehicles parked there. It does not appear as though it's ever been used before.
Is there a curb cut there?
There is not.
There is not?
There is not. The -- Mr. Benavides brought to my attention that 94 was stated as being a three-family, but it's a four-family, four-unit. There are three apartments, and there's a store, but I think the store --
Well, bakery.
Old bakery, but it's now a unit.
Yeah, but we're not going through that again. This isn't Snell Street.
No, no.
So if this plan is wrong, I recommend that we table it and get it corrected.
I got it. No, but I -- no, I think he said it was a -- just by way of -- the assessors, the assessors have it as a four-family. The --
But this plan does not, right?
I don't know.
The plan's six and two threes, and I think that's what your petition says, right? So this is not going to be Snell Street over again.
No, I don't want to do that.
This needs to be corrected before we can move on. If you are asserting otherwise, the conditional win is it's a three, because that's what's been presented to the Board. So if you think it's something other than that...
Let me just -- I got it. Let me just take a look at the assessors' map, at the all-assessors. Well, I don't -- I can't put my finger on it right this minute with the assessors. I thought it had four to eight.
Well, four to eight is the type of classification.
No, no, but I thought --
That doesn't tell you how many units are in.
I'm looking for the field card that had four versus three.
When I checked it?
Yes.
I thought there was represented the way the plan shows.
Three, you think it was represented as three?
That's what I thought it would have been.
Okay.
Because if I saw that it didn't match, I would have brought that to everybody's attention.
Was the old store just converted into an apartment?
Was it just?
No.
No.
So it's in an apartment or not?
It's a bakery.
It's vacant, right? No. It's up to you. You can come back in to add that as an apartment in the future if you want.
Well, no, I think that has to be --
That's its own special permit, potentially, converting that bakery into an additional dwelling.
Into an additional dwelling, it requires a special permit or a variance.
Potentially, or unless the Building Department makes the determination that it's okay to convert from the one use to the other, but...
No, that's going to be up to them, but that's -- so with that being said, now that we've brought to our attention, I would request that we table it. Do you want to table it?
I'm not sure.
Well, you want it as a four.
Yeah, no, it's going to stay the way it is.
So why don't we table it to the next -- can we -- so I'll make a motion to table it to the next meeting to correct the plan, to include it either as a four-family and maybe amend the petition to request the Board's authorization to turn 94 Everett Street into a four-unit project.
Okay. Before we do that, is there anyone here to speak in favor of or in opposition to this particular petition? That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that if anybody's here, they were heard. We have a request for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the tabling of the proposal until our next meeting in March.
I'll second.
Do we have that date, Patty?
Twenty twenty.
Twenty will be done. All right. Any discussion on the motion? Therefore, on the motion, Ricky?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Chairman Perry, yes. Okay.
Thank you. Sorry for taking --
And David, check and see when it was last a bakery?
Yes. I think that's last.
So if it hasn't been a bakery in two years, and bakery's not allowed in the A2 zoning district?
That's correct.
Then deal with that, and that may require a different filing altogether.
Yes.
Let's just make sure our paperwork's correct.
Thank you for bringing that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you both. Item number two, 295 Bedford Street LLC, care of Attorney Peter A. Salino. 295 Bedford Street and 57th Street, map N-3, lots 30 and 32. The applicant seeks to construct a mixed-use building on the property consisting of 52 residential apartments and approximately 8,000 square feet adult daycare center. The petitioner seeks variances for sideyard setback and use in the zoning district. The petitioner seeks a special permit to waive the number of parking spaces required in the zoning district, as well as a special permit to waive the percentage of landscaping area required in the proposed parking area. The applicable sections of the zoning ordinance are 86 Attachment 1, 86 Attachment 2, and 86-445. The property is located within an MD Medical zoning district and an HD Housing Development Overlay zoning district. Counsel, good evening.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Peter Salino. I am a lawyer. I maintain offices at 550 Locust Street here in Fall River. I'm before you this evening to represent the applicant petitioner known as 295 Bedford Street LLC. The petition before you, as Mr. Chair just read, is to erect a building on this site that will include 52 residential apartment units, as well as 8,000 square feet of commercial space on the first floor. I think most people are familiar with the site. It's bounded on the west by 7th Street, on the east by 8th, and on the north by Bedford Street. The proposal contemplates and requires three curb cuts along 7th Street and two on Bedford Street. Should be noted for the record that those curb cuts did not impact parking, because in those areas, there are signs on those streets that say no parking between those signs. So the existence of those new curb cuts should not impact the parking. In terms of the unit blend, again, it's a five-floor building. There are four floors of apartments, which in the aggregate come to 52 units. The count and blend is as follows. Level two is contemplated to be 12 apartments with one community room. There would be one three-bedroom on the second floor, four two-bedrooms, and seven one-bedrooms. On level three, there would be 13 apartments in total, along with an exercise room. One would be a three-bedroom, three would be two-bedrooms, and one would be -- I'm sorry, nine would be one-bedrooms. The fourth level would have 14 apartments. The unit count is one three-bedroom, two two-bedrooms, and 11 one-bedrooms. And level five would have 13 apartments, one three-bedroom, four two-bedrooms, eight one-bedrooms. The proposal includes parking such that there would be 74 spaces on site. The proposal is that 52 of those would be allocated to residential use, 10 would be allocated to commercial use, and there would be 12, where in effect overflow, spaces. The proposal also includes a enclosed structure that is on 7th Street at the curb cut, and that structure would effectively be a garage, slab-on-grade. It would contain various apparatus used to, for instance, plow snow, different things like salt, sand, and supplies for the building. The building is contemplated to be 62 feet high, and the waivers sought in this petition are the use in the medical zoning district, the side setbacks on both 7th and 8th Street, so we need to have 10 feet in the district, and as you can see from the plan, we're less than that. Additionally, seeking waivers by way of special permit for parking. The engineer calculates this out to be required, 114. The proposal is consistent with 74. And setbacks for parking services and landscape area in parking areas. So effectively, there's two or three variances, depending on if you consider the side setbacks one each, and then three special permits. I've pled in my petition that the hardship on the variance component would certainly be the irregular shape of the lot. As you can see, at the northeast corner of 7th and Bedford, you have a cutout there that's currently operated as a law office and has been during the pendency of my career. I think that this is a great proposal for the city. It's consistent with my client's other proposals in and around that area, and I think it would bring much-needed housing to the area. Happy to answer any specific questions that the Board has relative to the petition, and I'm sure this will get brought up, but there's at least one letter of support for the petition by Mr. Faola, because he's currently traveling and couldn't be here tonight.
Okay. Quick question for the adult daycare center. The parking spaces at that lower level adjacent to that storage area?
Mm-hmm.
Are those set aside for employees at that daycare?
The employee parking is labeled along 7th Street.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's -- there's lined parking spaces in it, but do you see where that is?
Yeah, they're labeled as employee spaces.
Yep, got it. Sorry, missed that.
No, that's okay. It's kind of buried in there, so I can understand that.
One of the earlier drawings, and thank you for getting floor plans on these. That makes a huge difference. And the bedroom count. That storage area, 2,100 square foot storage area, was originally listed as a maintenance area?
Yes, and it is on that plan.
And I don't --
I know it's listed on that one.
I don't want to correct Attorney Salino, but I don't believe that it's a standalone structure, right?
No, it's built into the building. Sorry, you can correct me, sir.
It's not a garage being built underneath.
That is correct.
The upper level.
It's part of the structure.
It's part of the building.
Correct.
We don't have any drawings that show that, but...
Yeah. And I spoke --
That's just a single-story, that garage section?
Yes, and I spoke with my client this afternoon, who confirmed it's completely enclosed.
Yeah.
There'll be a garage door on 7th Street.
Okay. And that's like a 30-foot curb cut there?
It is 30, that one. I believe the next two are 22, as you go north on 7th.
Of concern, and I'll bring it up now, I know it's going to get brought up by somebody, the vans for the adult daycare. We know that they operate in other places, and we see vans kind of littered around other parking lots. Can your client live with no commercial vehicles parked here overnight?
Yes, we've discussed that, and there's not any intention that this become a parking lot for the commercial tenant.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the Board? Questions?
Yes.
Yes.
So all these parking spots that exist now, are any of these leased or earmarked for any of the other projects that have come forward to the Board?
Good question. I don't believe so. He's not told me that. Obviously, I'm sitting here alone today because it's school vacation, so the architects and Disney World, Ken's away, Ken's away, but I do not believe it.
I can answer that.
Okay.
The answer is no.
Okay.
For the record, Dennis Diogo works for the Cudero organization.
All right.
So the answer is no. That's going to be all standalone for that particular building.
All right, good.
Okay. Only because, and Dan's correct, that conversation came up when the lofts were being heard.
Well, that's when we were proposing 101 across the highway, but now that's, you know, we got the okay for the 62 with what we have there, and now we're going to use the 52 with what we have here.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So if I understand correctly, Attorney, so we know the storage area and the maintenance area are one and the same?
Yes.
And what is the proposed use?
For instance, he has a Kubota, he has snowplows, bags of salt, things that you'd maintain parking lots and stuff with. So right now, you know Geronimo's garage?
Mm-hmm.
Which is there. They have a bunch of equipment like that in that building, which is proposed to be raised. So now that equipment has to go somewhere.
Right, so it's going into here.
Into that space, yeah.
Right, right now, we're actually displacing two garages, right? The old Canton Flunkers, that's on the big lot, as well as Geronimo's, right? Both those are the -- both garages, we house our equipment, right? And that's basically what that is for, so we can house our equipment, and like Peter said...
And that's for servicing other properties in the general area?
It's to service Cudero properties, all properties.
And again...
Cudero properties.
Could I just have your name again for Patty's?
Dennis Diogio, D-I-O-G-O.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else on the Board?
Is it going to be a service garage?
No service.
Yeah, important. Before I read into the record, is there anyone here this evening who wishes to speak in favor of this development? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of this development? I've seen none. We have a letter of support from Bristol County Economic Development Consultants, variance and special permit, 295 Bedford Street, Fall River. Dear Chairman Pereira, in keeping with this Office's past practice of supporting the development of new market site -- new market rate housing initiatives, please accept this letter and support for the requested variance and special permit for 295 Bedford Street, Fall River, Mass. As noted to the applicant, 295 Bedford Street LLC is seeking to construct a mixed-use commercial and residential use project consisting of ground-level commercial space and 52 upper-level two- and three-bedroom residential apartments. Kent didn't get the memo on the ones. Uses within the designated federal opportunity zone, which is characterized by a federal census tract area that has 27.4% poverty level. The private sector investment for this project reflects a total project cost in excess of $20 million, and such an investment will have a positive quantitative impact on Bedford Street and for shutting the budding neighborhood areas. As you are aware, and through the efforts of this Board and its members, Fall River has been able to accommodate a record number of new and revitalized housing development throughout the entire city. The project, along with others, will help the community build and diversify its housing stock for economic development and enhance neighborhood stability. In the past few years, the City of Fall River has seen an increase in development of market-rate residential units, and the demand remains high as people look for housing opportunities. In general, the demographics associated with the market are residential renters reflect the following. One, empty nesters looking to downsize and remain within the city, or move back into the city as they need to be next to a healthcare facility, restaurants, food markets, and shopping areas. Two, young professionals moving into the city and working here or commuting to Equidne Island, Providence, Boston, and points in between. And three, existing Fall River residents looking for updated rental units, offering HVAC, in-suite washer and dryer, off-street parking, elevator accessibility, and security. This project meets the criteria of those looking for market-rate residential living and will allow the city to continue its housing diversification efforts and provide housing choice for the market and residences of greater Fall River area. Ultimately, the action of the Board helps to smooth the development process and make Fall River to increase in supply of housing, which will lead to an overall reduction of rents. As such, it is for this reason stated above that I respectfully request the Zoning Board of Appeals approve the variance and special permit request before you tonight. Without the approval of the requested zoning lease, this project cannot proceed, and the city will have a sufficient private sector -- will lose a significant private sector investment within a deeply distressed census tract and an opportunity to further diversify in housing stock. Sincerely, Kenneth Faola Jr., Executive Vice President. See, that's why I like it when Ken's here, he speaks less. He only reads every other word when he stands up and reads it. We're good. I'm faltering, because there was some typos in there. You can tell he wrote it on vacation. All right. That was the only piece of mail in regard to this. It was a letter of support. There was no comment from the general public, so I turn to the Board. If there are any other questions, now is the time.
Just a point of clarification.
Yes.
One variance and two special permits being requested?
I think two variances, three special permits. So to clarify, the use in the medical district as an apartment would be variance one.
Okay.
Setbacks as to the side yard, which would be 7th and 8th Street, would be variance two. Special permits would be a reduction in parking from the required 114 to 74. Special permit for the setbacks of the parking service... Special permit for the setbacks of the parking services, and special permit for the reduction in landscaping and parking areas.
Okay. Okay?
Yes.
All right, anyone else?
I would just offer that, when you take each vote independently, the variance, make sure that you make a finding that you feel there is hardship to the parcel with regards to use due to shape, soil, and topography, if you're comfortable with how that's been presented. Special permits, as long as they're not substantially more detrimental and meets the requirements for the proposed use, and then be cognizant of placing special conditions that address all the comments that you've raised about what parking should be restricted, signage, for instance, if there are 10 employee spaces, so it should be signed as such and restricted to such. If there are 12 flex spaces, they should be labeled as flex, and that anybody can use them, and that there should be 52, 52 residential spaces that are restricted to residential use with signage. Also, you may want to consider no maintenance or repair or storage of commercial vehicles related to the adult daycare onsite or in the, in the maintenance area. Should also condition it based upon the unit count that was presented and the number of bedrooms. Other than that, I think we're in good shape.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone?
I'll be shy.
Jim's ready, he's just trying to-
Well, well, yeah, he just confused the heck out of, not confused me, but just added some make additions that are appropriate, but to remember them. We'll, we'll feel free to add to the motion, but we'll start. Can't the two variances be combined into one vote?
You could.
You could, you just don't know.
Yeah, I, I move that we find that there is hardship as defined is sufficient to grant the variance as requested for the utilization of the property from, in an empty district to be used for housing or for apartments, and that the setbacks as presented in the plan be granted.
Second.
That's on the variance?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Two variances.
Two variances, yep. Any discussion? They're hearing none. Ricky?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes? And then on the special permits?
Mr. Chairman, I find that the proposed proposal is not sufficiently detrimental to the area, and that it move that it be granted on the condition that all parking spaces be labeled and designated as presented in the proposal, including the number set aside for house, or for bedrooms, for, for visitors, for the utilization by the daycare center, that no equipment be, or no-
Vans, commercial vans.
Van, commercial vans be left overnight on the property, and-
Employee parking?
Yeah, I said all-
You said all the parking.
Yeah.
As presented.
Yeah.
We have a second.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? They're hearing none. We go to the other end. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Cottens?
Yes.
Dan DePere?
Yes.
Ricky Sahadi?
Yes.
And Chairman Prairie, yes?
Thank you.
Item number three. Tetral Real Estate LLC, Cudero Attorney Peter Salino, 72 Belmont Street, MAP, M24, Lot 7. The applicant is requesting a variance to divide the existing parcel into two lots, leaving the existing three-family dwelling, number 72, on Lot 1, and creating a new conforming lot, number 2. The proposed, proposal includes the provision of two off-street parking spaces per dwelling unit for the existing structure. According to the petitioner, seeks variance for use, lot coverage, and frontage as it relates to Lot number 1. The applicable section of the zoning ordinance is 86, Attachment 1. The property is located in an S, single-family zoning district, Council.
Good evening for the record, Peter Salino, on behalf of Tetral Real Estate LLC. This petition has been before the board before. It's back as authorized by the planning board as a repetitive petition. So, to refresh the recollection of the board, the property is obviously located at 72 Belmont Street. It had an existing three-family, non-conforming home on it. It had a barn on it, and then a, sort of a plentiful lot to the south. The last version of the petition sought to convert the existing barn into three residential units. There was obviously neighborhood outcry relative to parking, traffic, density-type concerns. As a result of those concerns, our petition was denied, and on November 26th, my client sought the Historical Commission's approval of the demolition of the barn. The Historical Commission gave a letter that certified that the barn could be demolished, and on December 10th, my client received a demolition permit to demolish the barn. So, the barn, barn is out of the picture at this point, and the proposal is whittled down to the following: divide the lot into two lots, leaving the existing structure hugging that northerly lot line, which contains three apartment units. Build sufficient off-street parking, i.e. two parking spaces per unit on what is shown as Lot 1, and create a new conforming, single-family lot labeled as Lot 2 on the plan. The waivers that would be required in, in order to receive this relief would be the frontage on Lot 1, which as per the plan is only 87.77, 100 feet is required in this district, which again is an S zoning district, and then the lot coverage requirement is 25% in the district, and the plan is showing 52%. I, proposed is 60%. As I discussed last time, I think, you know, we have a couple of different hardships associated with the parcel. We have a shape issue, we have the existence of the structure that remains right on the lot line, and then the open yard to the south and to the west. I fully understand and have read the opposition. I find the arguments to be a bit spurious because we were here last time, and we heard, I thought, that folks didn't want that barn turned into something because of the density that would be created, and then ultimately, now it seems like the demolition of the barn is a point of contention. But I would submit to you that this petition is much better than it was before. It's more in line with the S zoning district, and if anything, the additional parking will take cars off the street and better the situation in the neighborhood. So, for those reasons, I would submit to you that the petition is adequate, and would ask that the relief request be granted.
Okay. For my own clarification, because I'm, I'm not 100% sure, was the barn found to be structurally deficient?
Um, yes, and I could provide a copy of the letter from the Historical Commission, if you'd like that.
Okay. All right.
Would you like me to submit that into the record?
Uh, no, it was just my own curiosity.
Okay.
I just wanted to back up something. I have no questions at this point. Anyone on the board?
The newly created lot is conforming in every way, correct?
Yes.
And it is a single-family proposed?
Yes.
Actually bigger than what it needs to be.
Yeah, fair point. The requirement in the district is 12,000, and this is just under 13.
Okay. Before I go to the public, go ahead, I'm sorry, Jim.
On Lot 2, is the parking proposed for Lot 2?
It would be whatever's required in the district.
Okay. For the single family.
For a single-family home, correct.
All right. Let me read this letter into the, into the record. It's my way of a petition. We, the neighbors and abuddies to 72 Belmont Street, object to the variance-received request to divide the existing parcel into two lots. We further object for variance for use, lot covering, frontage for Lot 1. It is our understanding that the zoning laws are meant to protect residential stability, property values, and the single character of neighborhoods. Although 72 Belmont Street is not in the historic district, 40C district, the abutter on 258, 260 Prospect Street is, the rest of the block is located in the historic highlands of Fall River. Whereas we do commend Tetro Real Estate for the renovation of the historic Chauncey Sears house, it did demolish the historic gardens as well as the historic barn. The demolition of the barn was perplexing, as in October, a beautiful plan was presented to the zoning board to make the existing barn a three-residential unit, and within a month and a half, it was demolished, as the building department deemed it unsafe to the neighborhood. Were there any significant changes to the barn's structure to go from renovation to unsafe in less than two months? Also, the Historic Commission went from writing a letter of approval in October to convert the barn into three residential units, and then in December, wrote a letter of approval to demolish it. Perplexing. Many of us have been here for decades and are requesting our rights to preserve the character of, and privacy of our neighborhood and backyards. We also remind the zoning board that your decision here tonight affects all of the neighbors' and abuddies' rights to privacy, and of course, the almost 150-year-old character of our neighborhood. Thank you for taking our concerns into consideration, and please deny the variance requested for 72 Belmont Street, and it is signed by a number of, I believe, director abuddies and neighbors, judging by the, the addresses on here. Did we ever get a hard copy of that? Do you have the hard copy of that?
I do, and I have another signature that was put in my mailbox after-
Okay. Just make sure that they have that for the record, the actual hard copy of it with the signatures, not a photo.
Not a photocopy.
Is it okay to hand it to them?
Sure, yeah, at, at any point. All right.
Do you want, you want the original or a copy?
The original, please. I then turn to the general public. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this petition? Yes? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I saw you heard, I thought it was really anyone else.
Hi, my name is Dana Barnes. I am a member of the Board of Directors of the Greater Fall River Art Association, located at 80 Belmont Street. We were not one of the people, we are a director abutter to this property. We were not part of the, of the group that said no.
Mm-hmm.
There was then, I am speaking on behalf of our Board of Directors and our President, Ronald Gagnon. I have been authorized by my board to speak as a person who, we have direct, you know, knowledge of what's going on here. I understand why the barn was taken down. Believe me, as someone who appreciates the historic elements being in that historic house at 80 Belmont, it was pretty upsetting to see that come down, but I do understand why it had to come down. I, I grew up in a historic town, Lexington, Massachusetts, you can't get much more historic than that, so I, I understand when things have to come down. I also understand the neighbors. Believe me, they are vocal in their opposition to many things in that area, and I'm not 100% sure what drove them to say about the privacy and things like that. Feels like they kind of wanted things both ways. We want the, we want the barn to stay, but no, we want it to come down too, because we're concerned about privacy with pools and things like that. I also understand about the gardens. Believe me, I, I love the gardens, but they were so overblown. That whole house, the Chauncey Sears house, was so in disrepair, and, and it felt right that Mr. Tetro came in and did a tremendous amount of work to that property. I know what it was like beforehand. I walk past that every single day when I go to the association. It was crazy, and, and I have had the joy and privilege of seeing what's happened to that on the inside. It's a phenomenally gorgeous house, beautiful, like, turn-of-the-century house, gorgeous, gorgeous house. And as the abutter that is literally right next door, on the property line with him, I can't see why we wouldn't want to have parking off-street, especially for that apartment. That would be a tremendous selling point for that area. And also, another house, I mean, Fall River doesn't have enough houses and enough affordable housing. I mean, we are, I'm listening to all of this. So, as someone who is a director abutter, literally right next door to this house, I think that you should, you should vote to grant this variance. I mean, this is a tremendous opportunity for this particular area of the city, and it's not like there aren't also multi, other multi-family homes in here, in, in that particular area. I understand parking is a problem. I, I get it, believe me, I get it. I live in the area too, believe me, I get the parking issue. But if we're going to take parking off the street, put it next to the house, I can't see why this is not a good thing. So, that's what I have to say.
Very good.
I think you should grant this, as, as someone who is a literal director abutter to Mr., to Mr. Tetro's property.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else to speak in favor? I know there's a great deal of opposition. We've got your letter. If there's anything specific, anything different, state it. If you just want to get on the record to say, "Hi, I'm an abutter. My name is, I agreed with the letter that was written," that, that would, that would be good. So, if there's anyone here to speak in opposition? You want to read the letter first? I did. Oh, you did. My dulcet monotone voice.
Yeah. I, I wrote another letter separate from that, so I'm just going to read it. I, Don El Mederos, of 274 Prospect Street, am opposed to the variance's request by Tetro Real Estate, the 72 Belmont Street, or the Sears-Chauncey house. I feel he has already significantly changed the character of our 150-year-old neighborhood by demolishing the historic gardens and historic barn. I can now see cars driving on French Street, which in my 40 years of living on Prospect Street, I had never witnessed. In October, he showed a beautiful picture of plans to convert the barn to a three-unit building. Less than two months later, it was demolished as the building department deemed it unsafe to the neighborhood. How is this possible? Well, we did hear how it was possible. I don't feel it is a financial hardship for Aaron Tetro to obtain a variance to create a conforming lot for this, for this property. His real estate page claims they manage over 250 properties, which include both residential and commercial, and provide hard money loans, as well as buying and selling properties in Fall River. I believe he also owns 13 Fall River pawnbrokers, so there is no substantial hardship justifying this variance request. I would, I would like to know what is the intent of this new law? If the variance is granted, will you sell the lot? If not, what will you build on this lot? Is it going to be a single family, just one unit, or more than that? Please leave our neighborhood intact. Also, the privacy and comfort level of using my pool and yard will create anxiety problems for me, as well as adversely affect neighbors and abuddies. Please, ZPA, take our petition into consideration, as well as all the opposing comments here tonight, and deny this variance. Any letter of approval or statements of approval from individuals or committees who are not neighbors or abuddies should carry little or no weight in this decision. Respectfully, Don El Mederos.
Okay, I appreciate that. Have you ever copied that letter as well? Hmm?
Yeah.
We got a copy of that letter. If, if approved, the only thing they can do with that lot is a single-family home, period.
I'm sorry?
I said if approved, the only thing they could do with that second lot is to build a single-family home.
And that would just be one-
That's what they're asking for tonight.
And that would be just one unit? It wouldn't be like an in-law apartment or anything like that, it would just be one unit?
It's a single-family home.
Okay, I'm just trying to get clarification.
Um- Can we get a clarification as to what type of house it's going to build?
No, in response, Mr. Chair. As you know, number one, what's in front of the board is an approval of a single-family lot, not a specific house. We don't have a house planned yet. That's the cart before the horse. You seek the approval first, and then you come to the house. I'd also like to respond to the component of that last letter relative to financial hardship. Financial hardship is not a 40A statutory-specific right to a variance. In fact, it's exactly the opposite. So, we have never argued that it's a financial hardship that Mr. Tetro needs the money. Okay? And I'd also like to collect, correct the record that Mr. Tetro no longer owns Fall River Pawnbrokers. So, what's before the board is a piece of land on Belmont Street and Fall River. It's in a regular shape. I think we've pled appropriately, and we've gone through maturation's with this. We'd ask that the board approve the request.
Thank you, Council. Anyone else who, which to speak in opposition? Okay. I assume that anyone else who's here is, is signed on this? Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, they're hearing no others from engineering, please.
I would just like to make sure that the, I know the board understands, but I want to make sure the audience understands that this is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This is not the Historic Garden Board of Appeals. It's not the Historic Structure Board of Appeals. They deal with zoning issues only. With regards to the barn, it was determined at one point in time, apparently that Mr. Tetra wanted to renovate that structure into three units. And the condition of, I believe the argument at that time was that the condition of the structure, part of the argument was to save that structure, needed to become something in order to make it financially feasible. So when it was no longer to be three units and to preserve it, spending the money had to have some form of income to save the building. You guys didn't want that building. Now, if the building was going to remain as is, in the condition that it was in, and not repaired, at that point, it was deemed to be needing to come down. So that's why we've got two completely separate scenarios, then and now. And again, not a purview of the Zoning Board of Appeals. So tonight, the scope is very limited, that they're making, cutting out the existing three-unit building, not increasing the number of units. So we have a three-unit building with, I think, no formal off-street parking, to a lot that's pretty close to conforming, actually almost identical to the previous relief that had been granted already, before the homeowner got sick and wasn't able to follow through with it. And to create new off-street parking, so that parking is no longer an issue for that three-unit building. That's all.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anyone else on the board at this point? Questions, comments?
Do we first have to find that the proposal is substantially different?
It's a variance. It's a variance. No, he means as far as a repetitive petition.
Yeah.
I don't think you need to, but historically, this board has also made that determination the same way that the planning board does. So you can't.
Just to make sure that that is covered, that I do find that this proposal is substantially different than those that were presented in the last two years, and have to give approval to be considered denied.
Very good.
Second.
Motion and a second. On the motion, John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes. All right, so we have a variance to divide. We have a variance to divide.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would make the motion that the variance be granted with the proviso that a successful site plan review is...
A second.
Anything else need to be on there? So site plan review for both properties?
For both possible.
So we can make sure that, we want to make sure that none of the abutters have concerns regarding the stormwater runoff, because we are increasing the amount of paper.
Mm-hmm.
I'd say that the site plan reviews be successfully completed.
For both lots.
For both lots.
Very good. We have a motion. Do we, do we have a second, Dan?
Yes.
Did you have a second to that?
Yes.
Discussion on the motion? They're hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Calkins?
Yes.
Sandra Pear?
Yes.
Ricky Sade?
Yes.
And Chairman Prairie, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is Mr. Tolman here, or are you taking around the clock?
For the record, Mr. Tolman had a family matter and asked me to pinch-hit for him tonight, so I'll take the next two.
Okay. Lucky man. All right, this number is John, number four, Around the Clock Services Inc., care of Jeffrey Tolman. Pitch hitting for Jeffrey Tolman this evening, attorney Peter Aceolino, 568, 572 William Street, map I-7, lot 28. The applicant seeks a special permit under section 86, 423B of the City of Fall River zoning ordinance. The petitioner proposes to divide lot 28 as shown in the City of Fall River, assesses map I-7 into three lots, leaving an existing three-family dwelling, 560 William Street on one, and another existing three-family dwelling, number 570 William Street, on a second lot, and an existing single-family dwelling, number 572 William Street, on the third lot. The property is located in A2 Apartment Zoning District.
Good evening for the record, Peter Solino, on behalf of Jeffrey Tolman, representing the owner, applicant, Around the Clock Services Incorporated. This is a 423B petition. As we heard earlier, Mr. Assad had one similar to this. There are three structures on the property. 560 William is a three-family, 570 is a three-family, and 572 is a single-family. The property record cards all indicate construction prior to 1900, or it has the usual 1900 on there. So obviously, that's before 1954, and as a result, the applicant is seeking to divide the lots in accordance with the plan. Right now, on the ground, there is some parking between the two structures, between 560 and 570. So I spoke to Mr. Tolman on the way here. The applicant's willing to consider if there's a condition in the board that that needs to remain for the benefit of lot two. There's no objection to that, but obviously, we need to create some frontage for lot two, and that's why you see that six-foot access and utility easement.
So that's an access. You're saying that's used as parking now?
Yeah, if you, if you look on the Google Earth of it, there's cars in that chute, if you will. So Jeff advised me that the access easement's six, and if you give or take, you know, you got four on either side of the six, it looks like there. So there's about 14 feet building to building, but then, in the rear of the two, three families, you have those steps.
Mm-hmm.
And so that negates your four that you have up front.
Yeah, I think you can only stack two.
Right.
Because you can't get past the steps, that's undesirable.
Yep.
Not with six feet. Unless everybody's driving a Mini or a Smart car.
You can stack two, but how you deal with it is, the logistics of it is...
It's up to three lot owners.
Yeah.
Okay. The existing sheds standing in the back, that doesn't really matter.
Yeah, nothing is changing on the ground, really, is what it comes down to.
All right. Questions from the board? Number of units is gonna remain the same.
Yes.
We're sticking with...
Hundred percent the same.
Three, three, and three. Three, three, and single.
Three, three, and one, yeah.
Single, yeah. Nothing? And the general public, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone to speak in opposition of this petition? Sir?
Good evening. So my family...
Your name, please? Name and address.
My name's Paul DeSilva, 47 Middle Street. My family owns a buddy property, so that's actually where I was born. So I know that property was just recently bought. I don't know who bought it, I saw and hear who bought it. I wasn't able to find out any information of who it was, but regardless, when you look at the property, it was just so far not too long ago, and as Mr. Aguiar said, there's not a lot of space in between that building. So if you're gonna separate this into three lots, how do you actually have two cars in there when one, is it gonna be from one, who's responsible? Like, what land is that? And as you look at the back of the building, where you say that there's those steps there, there's about five feet in between those two steps, the porch that goes up that gives you access to, as your second form of egress. That is, I don't understand how you're gonna, I think it's gonna be a nightmare if you're separating it into three. I can understand if they were to keep the two houses in the front under one lot, maybe, and then actually, the back house be separate, but to, this is, historically, this has always been owned by one family, and that gentleman just passed away a few months ago, unfortunately. But he owned that property, maintained it, and, but to actually cut this up into three, it takes away from just the neighborhood. You're gonna have, because what's gonna happen is someone's gonna, there's gonna be a pissing match between, oh, you can't park here, you can't park it now, there's less parking on the street now, where historically, you've always had two spots. And to me, I just think it's crazy. So I'm here, like I said, in opposition of the request for the special permit. If they were to keep it with the two houses in the front as one lot, and then the back house, yes, but to do that, it's gonna be, it just becomes crazy for the neighborhood. And like I said, I'm here in non-favor.
Well, as counsel said, nothing on the ground is changing, so that quote-unquote driveway or easement, et cetera, is not changing. Nobody can drive anything more than a motorcycle to the back, what's gonna be that single-family lot in the back now, or if we approve this. So that doesn't change, and with six families up front, unless there's designation of whose parking where currently, it could easily be fisticuffs out there. So outside of our purview...
But there's a reason why, like, it's here, because the building inspector said there was an issue.
It had nothing to do with the parking, though.
No, I understand that.
Nothing to do with the parking. This type of division of lots, love it or not, is one of the most common things that comes in front of this board.
That's why it's a special permit, not a variance, because of existence of structures prior to zoning being enacted, they have the legal right to do this. They're required to do the best they can with how they decide to subdivide it. So those, you could, the board could ask them to look at a different way of doing it, but looking at it, I don't really think there's much of an option, because you do have to provide physical access for people to get from point A to point B.
You need to maintain frontage for that back lot.
And the only real issue that we're trying to bring back is to keep that parking there. Now, with cross easements and deed restrictions and all of those things that, yes, do create logistical nightmares, that all has to be in place prior to conveyance. And this board can require that condition, that all of these things are done to their satisfaction before any of these parcels get conveyed. And that all of these property corners are staked out, the easements are all staked out. So everybody who's buying it, there's a plate of record that acknowledges this, you know what you're buying, right? Trust me, I agree with you 100%. We deal with this all the time, but the board's hands are tied to some degree, because this is not a variance, and it is allowed by special permit, and all they really need to do is the best that they can. So, and that's why we put conditions like, you can't put up any fences out here in between along these lot lines prohibiting access. So there would be cross easements and access for everyone to get through this corridor, to get to either building and to the back. And the board can make that condition, that there are cross easements for all three properties through this rear area, and that parking is prohibited within a specific area, shown on a plan, and that they need to approve that. They could vote to request that this be tabled, and that all of this information is shown on a plan, so that they can see it next month. And that may be the right thing, to show where is the parking going to be, who's getting the parking, so that it's not just based upon what you're all saying, but that there's a plan to refer to. But that's up to you.
Thank you.
I thought the representation was that the two parking spaces were for the back single-family.
That's the representation.
That's the representation. But if I'm living in, you know, 570, and it's just outside my door, I'm probably gonna park there, unless I'm parking on the street.
Oh, it'll be a nightmare.
Yeah, no matter what.
But as long as there's two spaces, and some people can get in there, then I think you've done your job. Either that, or eliminate the parking and create another headache for all of the abutters. So...
Is lot two separate utilities now?
That I do not know.
That's always a...
That's gotta get separated.
And that's why it's labeled utility easement, so that that rear house would have to have its own water sewer, gas, all of that up to the street, through that utility easement.
So many of these, we've seen, that it's coming out of, goes into one house, goes into another, goes into a third, so that's gotta get less than... Anyone else in opposition? What are your wishes on the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
I think that, Dan makes a very good point, that I think that if we had a more detailed plan, we could make a more informed decision. Right now, it seems like we're flying by the seat of our pants. Should we do this? Should we do that? Should we require this? Should we not require that? To me, anyway, a more detailed plan with easements and so forth would be very helpful. So I would make the motion that the plan be tabled to the next meeting. I'm sorry, the request.
So the access and utility easement currently is shown as six feet.
Yeah.
And the definition that we need is parking?
Yeah, yeah.
And six feet may not be wide enough, because water and sewer's supposed to be 10 feet apart, so...
Right.
Unless you encase the whole thing. So there are ways around things, but this would give them the opportunity. The other thing is, if you decide that the parking is for the back house, and you straddle the required nine-foot space over the six, now you're impeding access to both walkways to either house.
Correct.
You may want to put the parking to one of the front units, so that way, you could shift it all to one building and leave the larger accessway for everyone to use on either the left or the right. So these are things for them to consider and bring back to you.
Which would be on a more detailed plan.
On a more detailed plan.
Yeah, so my motion is on the board.
So we have a motion to table. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Motion and second on tabling. Do you object, counsel?
No objection.
Thank you.
There'll be no tabling, thank you, because it wasn't at your request, it's at our request.
Thank you. You know, when you pinch-hit for somebody, and then you get whacked for 500 bucks on top of it?
Jeff wouldn't take it too well. That being the case, on the motion, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes.
Chairman Prairie, yes. All right, but don't go anywhere, counsel.
No, I'm not. I'm just moving over. This gentleman's here, come on up.
I'm number four, Robert Machado. Oh, Jeffrey's got you pinching on this one, too. Care of Jeffrey Tolman, as represented by attorney Peter Aceolino, 106 Boulder Street, map L3, lot 93. After the fact filing, the applicant requests a variance from section 86-466 of the City of Fall River zoning ordinance. The petitioner requests to permit the location and size of the existing non-conforming accessory structure. The petitioner also requests a variance regarding lot coverage. The property is located within a G, general residence zoning district.
Good evening for the record, Peter Solino, on behalf of Mr. Tolman. With me is Mr. Machado. Say your name and address on the record, please, right here.
My name's Robert Machado, 32 Bliss Street, Fall River, Mass.
He is not the owner, correct?
He is one of the owners. The deed has three names on it.
Gotcha.
So he's one of the owners. So my understanding of this situation and petition is that it's a single-family home, obviously. There was an existing garage to the right behind the house there. It was getting dilapidated. Mr. Machado took it down, constructed a 30-by-40 garage without permits. It's 1,200 square feet, obviously, and was called on it, and as a result, was given the option to take the building down or file for the variance. Therefore, he filed for the variance. My understanding is, he has some neighbors here who are gonna express that they're okay with the location of the building, as well as a signed petition. Why don't you go ahead and pass that in?
And this is a petition?
My understanding is it's a petition in support of the existing structure.
There was also a big shed in the middle of the property as well, that was also falling down, and it was just dangerous, and I saw, like, the house has no basement, no upstairs. My mom's 88, gonna be 89, so, you know, we cleaned it up for my sister to move in there, but there's like three people living in a small house, and there's not much storage, and she also stores stuff in there. And I thought, because I was, I had no idea, because there was a metal building, like, there was no foundation, no concrete, like, I thought, you know, I always heard, now I know the law, but I thought that it was okay, because it was just like, you know, one of those little metal garage, it was a metal garage. So I didn't know that you needed to pull up a permit, and that's the reason why, didn't know I would have, you know, pulled up a permit. But like I said, it's, you know, I use it for my truck and trailer, and I keep some cement bags in there and stuff like that, because I do a lot of work for the city as well. I have a small fence business. I don't run a business out of there. I just keep my truck there and my trailer, because obviously, I gotta, you know, keep an eye on my mother, which sometimes my sister's in and out. And that was basically, yeah, like I said, I cleaned up the whole place, you know, where it was a disaster before, did not look good, you know.
It looks great, but require building permits for buildings in the City of Fall River. So coming in here at this point is kind of like getting caught driving a car that's not registered with no insurance, going the wrong way in a one-way street. It's, you know, it's a whole pile of attractions here, so. And it's tight. How big was the garage that was there previously? It wasn't this big?
It was probably like 20 feet long by like 15, maybe.
The measurements are shown on the plan.
I'm not really sure. I mean, it was.
It was two different buildings.
Yeah, yeah.
It was two buildings.
One being 4x16.
14x16.
The other one being 10x30.
Anyone else on the board? Questions, comments?
This is a 12,000-square-foot building.
12,000.
12,000.
Oh, it says 12,000.
Which we allow 750, if you meet the right setbacks.
Yes.
That would be, that's a single-family lot in this district. I love it. Let me read this into the record. "We, the underside, are abutters of the property located at 106 Boulder Street, Fall River, Mass. We are in support of the carport-type garage," it's not a carport-type garage, "that has been installed at 106 Boulder. It is much better than the dilapidated garage that was there before and is an improvement to the neighborhood. Although we could not be there in person this evening, we are in support of the approval and have signed to indicate our support." I believe there are 10 property owners signing on this. Somebody scratched those out. Eight, nine, 10. So.
They're all signed.
I haven't checked the addresses against that, but they look like they're abutters.
Yes, Mr. Chair, my client's indicating that the people that are abutters to the north, 115, 119, 133, all signed.
And then actually another neighbor down further to.
Okay.
Across the street.
But these would be the people that would be most impacted.
Yep.
From engineering, I'm sorry.
Is 98, or they on the list?
This person's sign.
On either side?
Yes, he's actually here.
116?
So 98's here.
Okay.
The people on the right, she has a sick husband, he's in a, he's handicapped, she'd like to come, she said, yes.
This one?
She wasn't even going to come.
We just cut with the ones on one side, just wonder on the other side.
But someone else on the board right now?
Yeah, part of the major issue here is it's obviously definite, the business is being run out of this aluminum space building here. The trucks in the picture on Google Earth right now.
Yeah, I keep my truck there in my trailer.
And you store cement? You said it.
Yeah.
Do you definitely, you have another business location, operation, somewhere in the city?
No, 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 the business, I have the business out of 32. I just keep my truck there and my trailer and some cement bags and, like I said, and I have, and my mother uses the other half, like, we have stuff for my sister and stuff like that.
What's 32, when you say it's at 32?
That's my house, that's what the business is under, 32.
Okay.
I don't have like no, there's nobody that goes there. All I do is pick up my truck and leave.
Okay.
We're not like.
All right, so for the record, the business is run out of 32. What address?
32 Bliss Street, Fall River.
Okay.
So I don't have like any, all I do is pick up my truck and leave and then park it.
Okay.
Planning and zoning, Dan.
So I don't have to tell you again that this is an after-the-fact filing. At what point were you alerted by the building department that this was an issue? How long ago?
It was a while ago.
I know, it just took a while for you to finally decide.
Yeah, I guess, I had talked, I called, when I talked to Eugene, I had, when I talked to Eugene, he got on it, and then I guess some, he was busy, and I know Eugene was, he was in contact with Eugene, and then this is when we got the, you know, he just, but it wasn't, like, I was on him and I was trying to stay on him.
So I'll offer that as the applicant presented. This is a prefabricated building that gets moved easily, so contemplate that. It was constructed two feet from the west of your abutment.
Yep.
It was constructed three feet from the north of your abutment, six feet from the east of your abutment. We have provisions in our bylaw that allow for accessory structures up to 750 square feet that need to be four feet from each abutting property and six feet from the structure. That's a 750-square-foot structure. This is a 1,200-square-foot structure. So we couldn't even shift this building, well, you might be able to get four-foot setbacks, but you won't be able to get, I guess you could shift it a couple of feet closer to the house and meet the setbacks that we asked, that we have for accessory structures. But the size of it, again, I won't say almost double, but pretty close to double of what we allow. Of greater concern, and I'm glad that counselor, Pereira, is here tonight, is because she was one of the driving factors and forces behind site plan review with runoff issues and drainage problems, and so when I look at this and I see that the lot was also entirely paved where it was not previously, another issue that needs to be resolved. So now we have this large roof area that the water runs off of onto pavement and either to the street, which adds runoff to our drainage system or to abutting properties. We get calls constantly, and I get them from private landowners, from city councilors, and everyone. Can you go look at this house? This one's putting water on this neighbor, and these are, this is what happens when people build things without permits. It's just what happens. And as was stated previously, I too question the use of this structure, and the applicant is telling you completely what the main use of this building is. So, I don't know.
The square footage is, almost looks more than the existing.
I think it's bigger than almost any house in the neighborhood.
And the existing, you can't have an accessory structure bigger square footage than that.
Well, 750, or they can get a variance from that as well. So there are many different variances that you can come back here, that there was a plethora of relief that could have been come here and requested before going in and constructing a building.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else on the board before we go to the general public?
And you did say there is no foundation?
There's no foundation.
So there would be no foundation to rip out of the ground?
No, sir.
There's no slab? Nothing?
No, just it's on pavement.
It's on pavement, right?
It's on pavement, yes, sir.
It was all paved first and then.
Oh, yeah, it's paved, yeah.
So how long's it been up?
Probably like two years.
Any complaints about runoff?
It was right.
I have not received it to this day.
Nothing like, you know.
Still, still gotta go to site plan.
Just asking.
Anything else? Anyone here to speak in favor of this petition? I think it indicated.
I will. And the only reason that I will is because I've got the calls from some of the neighbors that this wasn't an issue and they kind of felt bad, I guess. His dad passed away, and mom, at 80-something, living there alone, just moved in, and the building, dad had been ill, and the building had been falling apart, so as a good son, let's put this up for mom, do this, I can put my trailer here, my sister can store stuff. We both kind of go back and forth, taking care of our parents. And I said, "Did you know you had to put up a permit?" I didn't, because I thought there was already a building there, you know, and it was falling apart, and I put another one in its place. Well, I think the rule is, if you do something and you didn't get a permit, there you have to pay double the fine or something like that, but clearly it's been there for two years.
Because he didn't appear before the board he was directed to, he did not. He delayed it.
Right.
This board did not.
Right, but that's what I'm saying. He went before the board.
No.
No, he, when he got notified.
Correct.
To go before the board, he talked to Eugene, this is what he told me.
Yeah.
He talked to Eugene.
He's a building inspector.
And then they were going back and forth, back and forth for Eugene, till he finally got a hold of him.
Was it your engineer you were waiting for?
Yeah, I was waiting for Jeff.
So let's speak correctly, that you weren't waiting for Eugene, you were waiting for Jeff to find.
No, no, when I had talked to him, he told me he's gonna give me some time to get things squared off and which.
So I don't want to hear anything about being delayed for any other reason than him, his consultant, didn't decide what they were doing until they got here.
All I can say is the time it's been there, the neighbors have said it's not an issue, and I said, you know, have the neighbors, if it's been there and there hasn't been a problem with water or whatever.
Well.
But if he has to pay a fine for not doing the right thing, then ignorance is not, you know, to the law.
It's interesting, Mrs. Pereira, that.
That's all I have to say.
No, I appreciate that.
If you agree with my plan review.
I mean, you know, we have one neighbor, one abutted to a different project, saying, "If you don't live in the neighborhood, you shouldn't have a right to say anything about it."
Right.
All right? And if the neighbors get to say, "This is okay, this isn't," then what the hell? We can shut down this board and, you know, save the.
Is there a letter in here?
No, sir.
Now, you want to understand that you would have been able to, you keep saying that the existing sheds were dilapidated.
Yes, they were.
You could replace those, the size that they are, no, no.
Yeah, yeah.
You could have bought a steel structure the size of that one and replaced the structures that you had.
There was also.
That's one type of permit to get. But this, and the size of this, goes so far beyond that, and I think Eugene advised you to that and let you know this.
No, sir, no.
No, 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 afterwards, he told you that, hey, this doesn't belong here.
No, he told me just to get, you know, get, to have the land surveyed and.
The option was two. It was one, take it down or go to the zoning board appeals and see if they let you stay.
Yes, sir.
Those were the two options he gave you.
Yeah.
So the first option was get rid of it, or come here. So you chose to come here.
Yes, sir.
And didn't even contemplate moving it a couple of feet in either direction to even meet some of the side yard setbacks.
Like, there was also a garden there, and my father, you know Portuguese people are, they love their gardens.
Well, I saw it all on aerial pictures, great vines and everything.
And it was getting a lot of like field mice and stuff like that, and ever since, you know, we cleaned it all up, you know, I got rid of all the field mice, there's no more, you know, there was rats in the house.
Is anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak in opposition?
Yeah, 98 Boulder. It looks a lot cleaner now than it used to be, so I'm okay with it.
Which you won't?
Louis Bonner.
Louis?
On the plan, it's V-O-N-N-E.
Okay.
Okay.
In either direction that the board decides to go in, address both requests, one for the structure itself and then also for the lot coverage, in both decisions, whether they are to approve or to.
Current.
Last chance, ask any questions, otherwise, let's go to a motion.
Current lot coverage is 99 percent.
Yeah, which they can't even give you a real number of what it previously was, because they just look at the area for it.
I'm guessing, yeah.
Time for a motion, guys.
Dan, when you say combine both of them, you're talking lot coverage and? So, again, if you decide to deny, the denial is the building needs to be removed and the asphalt needs to be removed.
Okay.
Because it's the lot coverage, so the whole thing is paved. We deal with the building on one set of, section of relief.
Right.
And then lot coverage for the other. On approval as well, you can approve the structure. You can approve the structure that it needs to meet certain setbacks, and you can also require that a bunch of pavement gets removed as well. You don't have to approve the lot coverage. So be creative if you do want to try to allow this to remain, you could also attach it to the single-family home, so they could have actually built in addition to the house that would have provided other additional storage as well. So, but that's, you have to deal with what's here now. You can't really instruct, but you can condition it if you want to approve it. If it's to deny, deny it and state what needs to be removed, or you can approve it with conditions that allow other things to happen. Or again, ask to see a different plan that shows maybe the building being shifted, that maybe they can meet setbacks of four and four, and then we're not dealing with setback relief and potentially four in the back and six to the house. So now we're minimizing the relief by saying, okay, well, we're meeting the setbacks, now what we need to deal with is the size of the structure. So now you're only dealing with 750 square feet to the 1,200. So that's narrowed down relief. Then you could deal with the lot coverage itself. I don't know historically or why there are driveways on each side of this property. Do they actually need them? Can we get rid of some pavement and minimize the amount of lot coverage? You could theoretically design this so that you don't have an increase in lot coverage, and two, don't need relief for setbacks, and the only relief requested is the size of the accessory structure. They chose not to do that. So if you want to give them the ability to try and do that, they can request to table it and come back with a revised plan, or you can just act on it either way tonight.
Attorney Salino?
So I just met this gentleman 10 minutes ago, but what they're saying to you is if you pay $500, you can continue it for one month and try to redesign this to see if you can live with some removed pavement and to move the structure or reduce the size of the structure.
Or reduce the size, yeah.
Yep.
I mean, the setbacks that Jeff has shown, I think you can meet the required setbacks for an accessory structure, then you're only dealing with the size.
Yep.
So it minimizes that you need to be here.
So this would need to come, you've got an extra two over here.
Yeah.
Okay? So your option is let it go to vote. If you lose, you're gonna take the building down and you're gonna be cutting pavement out of here. Or you can ask the table, pay $500 to that nice lady tomorrow morning, and then come back to fight another day. Those are your options.
Can you physically slide that building two feet in one direction and one foot forward?
Yes, yes.
Then this would be four, and this would go from two to four.
Yeah.
So you apply.
It's a building built in such a way that it could be reduced in size?
I don't know.
Probably not.
I'm not, I'm not, yeah. I don't know.
Probably not, Joe.
Who put the, who put the structure up?
It was a company, they're like out of TNT carports. I think they're like New York and they do so many when they're in area.
Right, they should have known.
They didn't get a permit either?
No, like I said, I, that's.
I understand you hired them, but.
If they're a licensed contractor in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, they should have known to get a permit.
Yeah.
If they're not a licensed contractor.
Maybe you can reach out and ask them why they didn't apply for a permit, right? So let's try and pass the blame on to them, that might help.
Yeah, like I said, all I did is I called them, I thought, you know, usually the companies take care of it.
Yep.
And.
But they didn't just deliver it and you put it up?
No, no, they put it up, yes, sir.
So they can come out and shrink it.
Well, let's, let's try and minimize the relief that we're dealing with, and see if there's something we can do with that.
We get the request.
Well, that's it, so.
Yeah, so you need to make that decision, but I'm telling you, that's your best.
Yeah, I can move.
I think you should ask the table, okay, so that you have a chance to try to redesign this and address the concerns that were raised tonight.
Okay, we could, yeah.
And you understand you have to pay $500?
Yeah.
And it would be in April? No, it would be in March, yeah, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, so.
Do you do concrete work?
No, I do fencing.
Oh, okay, you don't know how to do pavers?
No, no, I don't. No, no, I don't. I just do like.
Pavers don't count.
So we do a lot of work, I do a lot of work for the, for the school departments. Like, we did all the Henry, we did the Henry Law, the cost.
Just trying to give you options.
Yeah.
What he's basically saying is if you don't have solid asphalt.
Not, not paper.
But this is the only driveway.
But Dan, just to, I'm not speaking on the spot.
We paved that.
If this were you, what is the best way forward to minimize?
I would minimize and I need to come back and ask you to vote on a very narrow scope of the size of the structure.
But what I'm saying is what would that entail to minimize?
A revised plan.
Yeah.
Get rid of some pavement and shipping building two feet, which you just said we should do.
Get rid of some pavement.
Try to slide the building two feet because there's no foundation on anything. It's probably just pinned into the asphalt. Slide the building two feet to the east and one foot closer to the building so you can get four feet all around the building.
Okay, so Attorney Solino?
Yes, fully inspected and permitted.
Again, to try to, to try to minimize.
Right.
So what, what Dan is saying is if I was sliding, would be two feet one way, one foot the other way to achieve four by four.
Well, they're, hopefully their survey, he's got plus or minus distances. So let Jeff say, can we fit this building, meeting all of the building setbacks that are required and minimize the size.
Trying to do is like minimize the.
Work in the building.
We know there's grand variances if we don't have to. So if there's a little bit of work that can be done on everybody's part to allow this to stay and have not have to move it to 32 Bliss Street, then let's leave it here.
Okay.
Okay, so the applicant will make a motion to table the petition to the March 20th meeting. And the applicant will pay the fee tomorrow and if, I can fill out the form if we have it or he can fill it out tomorrow.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I would say we grant the permission to postpone or to continue to our March 20th meeting.
Motion and second. On the motion, Ricky?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Karen Curry, yes.
Thank you.
All right, get creative, sir. See what you can do.
Tell Jeff to get creative.
Thank you.
I, if it were me, I'd be looking for that contractor. That was the last item of new business. It was as far as petitions. Next item of business is election of officers.
Can we do this in one fell swoop to everything as is?
Somebody can make a motion to keep the existing slate the way that it is.
I would do that. I would make the motion to leave everything as is as far as offices.
Second.
Wow. You can vote no, John. Motion and second. Sure you want this?
Thank you.
It's the second.
Okay. Motion and second. On the motion, John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ricky?
Yes.
Oh, what the heck.
Me, yes. Okay.
Well, can we just check the form for people outside to see if they're involved?
Citizen's input.
Emily's gonna check to see if anybody's signed.
Emily's gonna check, but I don't think there is nobody.
I don't think there is, but.
Let's look at approval of minutes. Has everybody actually read the minutes from the January 16th meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Good reading.
Anybody? Two?
Second. On the approval of minutes, oh, we did have somebody. What happens sometimes if people want to speak.
Yeah, Paul already spoke. You want to speak again, just about?
The motion on the minutes is a second. Very simply, all in favor. I, before we go to adjournment, I just wanted to say this. Thank you for a vote, a vote of faith. I think we've come a long way in the last year. I think the the work between your department, your office in particular, and our board has increased. I think it's made for better. We end up tabling some things that maybe weren't right coming in the door. We're seeing a little bit better applications by and large, fewer, fewer. You know, it's, I think we're moving in the right direction. I really want to thank everyone for what you're doing on this board. I mean that sincerely.
I think the chairman's doing a great job.
Thanks, buddy. I wasn't looking at it. That's okay. All right. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Craig.